All good.
Okay.
Welcome, I'm calling to order the Merrimack School District meeting for June 3rd, 2024. Board members Ken Martin and Jenna Hardy and Assistant Superintendent of Business Matt Chevanel are excused tonight. Will you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I will open the floor for public participation. If you'd like to stand and make a comment to the board, you are welcome to come to the microphone and state your name and address. If you're a student, no reason to state your address. So it's open to the public. Seeing none, we do not have any recognitions tonight, but we will at our June 17th meeting. Very excited about that. And so we will go to our superintendent update.
Thank you, Lori. Just want to mention that we had a nice, I think Lori, Lori was there certainly, and I was there at a Historical Society meeting or event on Saturday where School House number three and School House number 12 were recognized on Saturday, particularly School House number three as being included in the Registry of the Country Schools Association of America, which recognizes schools of distinction around the country. The two schools in Merrimack happen to be two of a total of four schools in the entire state that are included in the Country Schools Association of America Registry. There was a beautiful plaque on the building, some wonderful words spoken by John Ostenka, the president, and Chuck Moore, the vice president, along with Finley Roth House. It was a very, very nicely done ceremony. It's nice to see that building preserved so beautifully. And what we're looking to do in the future is have our students attend and make it an event where they dress in sort of period outfits, which has always been popular with elementary students. We're also going to look to include our students in extended learning opportunities with a Historical Society. So it was very, it was not only a beautiful day, but it was a beautiful event and congratulations to the Historical Society for the application and the designation as of those two schoolhouses as being schoolhouses of significance in America. I want to mention also that, just a reminder that this Thursday at 5:30, Holly Hall has mentioned that there will be a graduation ceremony for the adult education graduation. That is a result of the pathways, Alternative Pathways to Graduation Program that we began this current school year. We had nothing before that. And either 11 or 12 students will be graduating and we are extraordinarily proud of them. There are students who would have dropped out of high school and we have given them a pathway to graduation which is so meaningful in their lives. And so congratulations to all of them. We look forward to seeing them on Thursday evening. We received an email today from the Department of Education in terms of the audit findings with respect to grant accounting. And I want to congratulate Matt, who, Matt is not here tonight, he is ill today. I want to congratulate Matt and Sue Laws and certainly Amy for bringing as much fiscal integrity to the entire financial management of grants as anyone could do. We have a great team in the central office. You know, I want to recognize Matt in that, I know he's been here for over 20 years and this school district has never had a financial irregularity with him in charge of the business affairs. And so that does not happen in every school district. And so we are very fortunate to have a person like Matt. And so I want him to know how much, and you to know how much we appreciate him. Well, we have a few very exciting things tonight from Nicole Diggins. The gifted and talented students at Reed's Ferry and Thornton's Ferry put together a, through a project-based learning exercise, a book on species survival. And I have to tell you, this is just an outstanding job. I'm going to pass this around so you can take a look at it. The students researched, wrote, and illustrated this book on their own using Book Creator, a software program. We've shared this book with the Reed's Ferry and Thornton's Ferry staff and students and plan to strategically post QR codes giving access to this book different spots in the Merrimack community. What they did through a project-based learning experience, they learned certainly about species and endangered species and threatened animals in New Hampshire. As I say, I'm going to pass this around. They did the text and the pictures themselves. I'll start it over here and then Amy, I'll pass it over to you. They did absolutely an outstanding job. And it's one of the nicest pieces of work by elementary students I think I've ever seen. So congratulations to them. Also, we had a group of students today going to the Great Bay Environmental Center. I have some pictures to send around there. This is a field trip where they were welcomed and studied all about marine life and natural species. So there's some interesting pictures there also. You know, it's exciting to share the great things that students are doing and staff are doing, really right up to the end. This was a third grade class, the Great Bay Discovery Center had a third grade class going to it from one of the schools that was, third graders at MES, excuse me. And so we congratulate Marsha Kelly and the group that went on that trip. Track and field championships just from the high school from Brent Whitney. The spring track and field season concluded this weekend with three Merrimack athletes competing the meet of champions at UNH, going against the top athletes in all three New Hampshire divisions. Melanie Bedada Jr. ran the 1600 meter, running her second best time of the season and taking ninth place above her 11th place ranking. Ella Fong, a senior finished her season throwing a javelin and coming in 15th place. And Mia Getchell, a senior through the shot put, taking 10th place in only a short distance away from less than a foot between that and first place. So I want to congratulate them on their hard work in preparing for the meet of champions. Fifth grade student Gavin B. at J Mews has raised $211 for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Gavin and his grandmother handmade items for the school store, including coasters, bookmarks, phone holders, marble mazes, and more, using a sewing machine. And we congratulate them for that great, great effort of raising the $211 for the Make-A-Wish Foundation. Merrimack High School Unified Track and Field Team, just an outstanding group of students, competed for the first time at the Unified State Championships at Alvin High School on the 28th of May. Athletes Luke Doer, JT Tiller, Alicia Pizano, Olivia Couture, Camryanne Light, Emily Harrington, and Sophia Gonzalez Cruz competed in the 100 meter dash, the long jump, the shot put, and the 4x100 meter relay. They were assisted by partners Alexa McGann, Cara Ward, Maris Mitchell, Lily Dahlbeck-Joyl, Noah Devine-Zaktilla, Elise Sakalakos, Alicia Pizano, and was the seventh in the dash, Cameron Light and Alexa McGann were both seventh in the shot put. The team was coached by Kathy Mira and the assistant coach Sarah and student assistant coach Austin Cassidy. If you have a chance throughout the year, unified sports teams are just an incredible inspiration. And I know Chase, you've attended some of those events and seen it. And there is nothing better in life than seeing students with disabilities participate in all sorts of sports activities. Last Friday, members of the Merrimack High School Chop Shop came to Thornton's Ferry or went to Thornton's Ferry to work with all the fourth grade classes. The high school has developed a steam activity using Legos to lead the fourth graders through a series of challenges. Every fourth grader had a wonderful time and it was amazing to see the leadership skills used by the high schools. You know, sometimes, and I've seen many instances where adults are leading an activity and the students are engaged for the most part. But if high school students are running those activities, students are glued to the high schoolers. And it's always amazing, always heartening to see that. I want to congratulate Colby Weigant, first grade teacher at Masco Elementary School. She's been nominated by the New Hampshire Down Syndrome Association for the 2023-2004 Exceptional Educator Award. That, the winner will be determined coming up shortly on Sunday, June 9. Colby will be at a dinner at the Puritan Back Room and one winner will be announced. We're hoping Colby will be that winner. Regardless, congratulations to her for her outstanding efforts. Let's see, we have from Mike Shaughnessy at the high school. Thursday night, Merrimack TV will be airing the 7th Annual Merrimack High School Film Festival at Matthew Thornton Room, live at 6:30. So we look forward to that event. And I believe that is it for tonight. So lots and lots of wonderful activities by our students and our staff right up to the very end. And we're very proud of them and thank them very much for all of their hard work.
Any comments from the board? All right, we will move on to Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
Good evening, everyone. And happy June. I feel like we're here and we're looking down the end of the school year. And Chase, I'm sure that somewhere you have a calendar that lets you know how many more days you have. But for us, we're right up until the end. I want to let families know that the New Hampshire SAS results are rolling in. So if you have a student in grades three through eight or an 11th grade, you can log into their family portal and see your students' results. If you need directions or you're not quite sure how to do that, post it on our district website. It's a set of directions that will also help families to be able to secure their unique code that they need to be able to log in. So an important part of assessment is having data shared with all stakeholders. So we want to make sure that families know where they can find that information. Also, want to let the community know that students at Merrimack Middle and High School were given the second year opportunity to participate in the Gallup Poll. We talked a lot about that poll this time last year. And so remember that that survey helps us to capture data about student engagement, entrepreneurship, hope, and career-connected learning. And just like last year, again, I will share a summary of our results once we receive them. And I'm looking forward to our presentation tonight. We have our middle school team here, Stephanie and Leah and Kathy and Patrick and Krigus. And I'm looking forward to the highlights that they will share. And at our next board meeting, we will have two presentations. You will get to meet our Student Data Collection Specialist, Bonnie Henson, who has a new role district-wide this year, but was at Thornton's Ferry last year. And she's going to come, and this was a request you made many months ago, was at the end of the year, can we have a summary, a synopsis about iReady and all of the other data that we give? So she'll be on hand. I have asked her to kind of keep it high level. So if there's something very specific you want to know, please let me know. And we'll also have the Teacher Evaluation Committee Team presentation. So you can see the really great updates that we made. So I'm looking forward to that as well.
All right. For the School Board update, I want to thank the RFS team and their amazing art show on Thursday and the wonderful personal invitations that board members receive. I want to thank you so much. It is just an incredible opportunity to see the creativity of our students. Also, for the board, we have a Zoom meeting with Jenna and I with administration to talk to someone to lead our goals meeting on Zoom on Wednesday. So we will be letting you know how that goes. Also, NHSBA proposals, I mentioned it at the last board meeting, be thinking about if there's anything that you would like to see changed at the state level and with other school districts. We'll talk about it at the goals meeting, but that delegate meeting is October 19th. So we need to prepare any proposals that we have and send those along. I'd also like to say one thing that Amy had mentioned about the SAS testing. If, and this is mainly for parents, if there's something that you see in your child's scores that looks off or odd, I want to encourage you to ask your teacher. There are a lot of different components that are part of that scoring. And it can be sometimes concerning. And I know for myself with my kids, when they've had testing, there might be something that I'm concerned about, or maybe that there's something that they're missing in their education. So I highly recommend that if you have a question about the scoring or a particular category in a particular score, please seek your child's teacher. They will be happy to explain what they were tested on and what kind of things that we're looking for in those scores. And I want to say how excited I am about coming Thursday night to the adult graduation. That is just such a major event for this board. We saw the dropout rate and we wanted to work with administration because we knew it was their heart as well to change that. And so it's going to be an exciting night to see that Thursday night. And then of course, the 15th graduation. All of you would have received your parking pass in your envelope. If you did not get that, let me know. And the board gets the privilege of seeing graduation up close and personal. It's a wonderful, wonderful day. So we're very excited for the high school. All right, we'll move on. Student rep update. Oh, Amy.
I actually had a question for Amy, and this is only a question because I happen to have a kid who takes SAS testing. Math has been in for a while yet now, but language arts hasn't. And I'm wondering if you wanted to maybe mention that to concerned parents who might be going, why isn't my language arts scored?
Yeah, the language arts will trickle in. You may remember that the state asked us to, they needed to do some recalibration. So we did the writing assessment in early March. And from then, they've just been saying to us, oh, the results are coming, the results are coming, the results are coming. So they will trickle in once your students' reading and their writing has been scored. They have said that by the end of June, all scores should be in, but you are accurate. The math scores are in there, the science scores are in there, SAT scores, but reading and writing in grades three through eight, they will, they are trickling in. So if you get a little nervous, and as I would echo what Chair Peters said, if you have a concern or a question, please reach out to your student's teacher. I'm happy to answer questions, administration. But yes, we are waiting on those results.
And I was just going to talk a little bit about the art show. So first, Sophia, fourth grade, gave me my invitation. But I was able to bring my 91-year-old mother-in-law, who is very artistic and very creative, worked in a flower shop. She had the time of her life at the Reed's Ferry Art Show. She thought that the work was incredible. And again, just the number of parents and guardians, all who were there, all the children celebrating, it was really a night to remember. So thanks for all the work that those teachers did.
Yeah, thank you. As Mr. Olson said, it really is just amazing how even at the end of the year, wrapping up, we still have so much going on at the high school and all the schools. Just looking at the information I have to present to all of you tonight, we have so many accomplishments, so many events. It's just great to see, you know, community participation, student participation, even to the very end of the year. So with that, I wanted to talk a little bit about athletics in addition to what Mr. Olson mentioned. I just wanted to add that in the regular season, we've concluded with seven out of nine teams making the postseason, which is a pretty amazing statistic. So we always talk about how great our athletic teams are, but I just wanted to share that because that's a really great achievement for all of the big athletic teams. And in addition to victories, we have an academic win for the Envirothon team, which for those that don't know, that's a competitive team at MHS that participates in environmental studies, competitions, research. So I have a letter from the co-chairs, Marlo Jones and Sally Egle, that they sent about this win that was two weeks ago. So they write, "The MHS Envirothon Club earned one of the top spots in the NH State Envirothon Competition held at NHTI on May 21st. Placing third in the state overall, team members Maddie Doyle, Isaac Flowers, Atticus Davis, Piper Saltsom-Wilps, Amelia Gregory, and Emily Flowers excelled in their fieldwork and written analyses across the wide-ranging competition topics of forestry, wildlife, aquatic ecology, soils, and land use. These MHS students also received high praise from the panel of environmental and conservation professionals who evaluated their current issue presentation on renewable energy for a sustainable future. This was concluded with creative ideas for a net zero community by, among other things, repurposing the brownfield sites throughout Merrimack." And just spending time with this team, I'm not on the team myself, but I have some close friends that are, and I have attended some of their meetings. They're always so hard at work. They're always collaborating, presenting to each other. So it's just great to see a culmination of all of their efforts in that. Also, last week, we had on Wednesday, May 29th, two big events. First of all, we had the eighth grade night at the high school, which was a night for MHS students to welcome an eighth graders to participate in clubs, activities, athletics, band, et cetera. And it was really great. We had a great turnout. It was great to see lots of families with their kids. People really showed great interest in a lot of variety of clubs. And there were a lot of students there participating too. So that was great to see. And also, we had, let me see here, we had on Thursday, May 23rd, the MHS Band and Chorus Students dedicated their evenings to perform at the J Mews Arts Festival for a night of music, art, and fun. The students that performed had audiences of district faculty, staff, and families. And they were amongst other J Mews performances from upper elementary band and chorus students. And this is an event in addition to Calvi-Cade, we really see how the MHS Band and Chorus Program has evolved students and their musical talents throughout that J Mews level, which is when students take on band in particular, start playing their instruments. And having that MHS performance there really shows how they grow and develop in just a few years throughout the school district. We also had for awards night, we have senior awards night coming up on Wednesday, June 5th at 6:00 PM, where we're going to be celebrating scholarships, academic awards, and membership of the New Hampshire Scholar Society for all high school students who have earned those various achievements. And we also have a music awards night, which is going to be June 11th for chorus and band students. And then finally, as Chair Peters mentioned, we have senior graduation coming up soon, which is a really exciting event for me and all of my fellow students. And although it's sad to be leaving the district after being here for so many years, we have a really fun week planned. So on the week going up to that, we have sign-out day this Thursday at six, Thursday, the 6th, from 12:25 to 3:30. And then there's also an alternate date on Friday. And leading up to the graduation on the 15th, we have a senior week, which I'm very excited about, which is going to be hosted by the Merrimack High School Class of 2024 Student Council. And we have a really big week planned. I'm really excited for it. I'm sure a lot of my fellow classmates are. So we have a movie night on June 10th. The next day, we have the Hawk Walk, which a lot of faculty and staff know and reflect on lovingly. We're going to have MHS students come down to J Mews, MMS, and the elementary schools to see all of their teachers, connect with students. They're going to be in full garb, which is really exciting for all the younger kids to see especially. And then on Wednesday, we're going to go to Six Flags, which is very exciting. And then Thursday, probably the biggest event of the week, we're going to have the senior semi-formal on Lake Winn-Pasaki. So I'm really looking forward to it. We have some graduation practice sprinkled in, but it really is, it's been a great four years. And I'm so happy to have shared it with everybody here.
Well, Chase, we are so glad that you joined us on the board as our student representative. And we are thrilled for you in your graduation and all that is about to happen in the next week and a half. And then of course, your future.
Yeah, thank you so much.
So I want to thank you for everything that you've done here.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity. It's been great to serve with all of you on the board.
It's been wonderful to have you.
Thank you.
Naomi or Lori, do you have any comments? Okay. All right, we are bumping, if people are following our agenda, our old business, our, the board's response to the Merrimack Village District's low-salt use on Continental Boulevard to our next meeting, because we would like to have a full board decision for that. So I would like to welcome now for our new business, our amazing middle school team to share with us some middle school highlights of the year.
There it is. You got to push it. Good evening, everybody. There it was. Nice to see everyone. Thank you. Happy spring. Just like what Ms. Doyle said, congratulations, Chase. We're looking forward to the Hawk Walk. We'll wave when you walk by. It's going to be terrific. And I appreciate everybody having us. I'm Krigus Bozeman, the principal, and I'm joined by an amazing team. We brought some panels to talk about some highlights from this year. So we wanted to, didn't want to get right into it. When they said highlights, we said, all right, well, we have a lot to share. We didn't want to take everyone's time for the entire night. So we kind of boiled it down to some things to share, which we're excited about for not only where we've been, but also for where we're going. So we've had a busy year from the fall all the way to the spring. And this is something that I think the board's heard me speak about plenty of times. Our students and our staff have heard me speak about it plenty of times. We talk about it every day. It's our, it's our four core principles. And just as a reminder, this was an exercise in student voice from a couple of years ago, where students got together and spoke about and decided what they wanted and what they felt was important for a middle school student and for important for their middle school experience, and what they thought that the ideal middle school student would look like. And we boiled it down to four core principles, the first one being mature, maturity, determined, supportive. And the result of all three of those is having a little fun too. Middle school, it's important to have some fun, for sure. So what we wanted to do tonight, if this works, is that we wanted to try and look at each one of these four core principles and talk about what we, some highlights from this year for each one, but also what our goals are for the next school year and beyond. So we've kind of got it chunked out into a few different categories here. The first one, when they say maturity, what they really mean is meeting the expectations for different situations. You know, we know and believe that a student has to be ready to learn. They have to be ready to go to the cafeteria, to be ready to walk in the hallway. And middle school has a lot to do with those expectations, so on and so forth. And so I'm going to turn it over to the gentleman here to my left, who's our Dean of Students, Patrick Jennings. And this was not only a new person to our district, but also a new position, who was brought in this year, created this year to help bolster some of our MTSSB systems and structure to be able to support student management, student behavior. So then that way, they would be ready to learn. And then that way, you know, we could really flourish with some of those other things. And since he's sitting next to me, I'll take an opportunity to embarrass him. But this gentleman here is a difference maker. He hit the ground running when he got here. He brought in an amazing battery of systems that were, you know, research-based and proven and implemented this year. And we've got some data to even kind of look at it and see that it was, it was pretty effective. And he, he's, it looks like it went off there. He can, he can connect with any student from front to back. He can support teachers with whatever situation it is. And he's made quite a difference in our school. And so if that's embarrassing enough, I'll have you go through and I'll change the slides for you.
All right. Yeah, thank you. Now I have to live up to that. So this first year's been absolutely amazing. And the things that not only the staff, but the students are able to work with me and the staff members and our Systems of Care team to create has been absolutely amazing, fun, exciting, challenging at times, but really has made such a difference in not only our teachers and our students, but really the culture of our building and what's driving what we're doing every single day. So there's a few different things that we started with this year that really at our different levels of support are Tier One, our whole school initiative, Merrimack Money. Our Tier Two, one of our examples, our check-in, check-out, or as we call it, our CHICO sheet, where students, they have a trusted adult. It doesn't always have to be a teacher. It could be another staff member in the building. It could be one of the custodial staff members or even lunchays or something like that, where they feel they can go to and rely on. And then our Tier Three team, who's been absolutely amazing, working with our Tier Three, our small group of students that we have there, our Systems of Care team. And this group has really helped monitor students, check to see what's working, what's not working, what can we continue to implement, what should we change with those small group of students. And then here's a few examples of what that looks like and why we're sort of doing this. And part of that is our, our school-wide behavioral expectations. And the students know this by heart almost. And this is derived from our mature, determined, supportive, and fun. And posted all throughout the building. And as you can see, it goes from to and from school, on the bus, the classroom, common areas, hallways, restrooms, and cafeterias. And the different sections of this are posted and printed out in big posters throughout the building. And it's broken down, right? And so when, when we first got there, when we first started to look at what mature, determined, supportive, and fun meant, my first question was, how do I explain fun to middle school students without like there being too much fun and say a bathroom? And what we ended up coming was, fun is, fun is you're doing those mature, determined, supportive activities. And then you're able to have those fun, exciting activities that help build that school culture. And then, so here's an example of our, our Merrimack Money. And as you can see, it has a lot of our staff members' faces on it. And the students absolutely love it. And the reason why we decided to get into this Merrimack Money at our middle school and our raffles was because we started at our middle school and our raffles was because we started to realize that our behaviors for each month weren't really decreasing. They were sort of on a, on a slow gradual increase, and what could we do as a, as a whole building, as a school, to get the students motivated to, to be mature, to be determined, to be supportive, and to have that fun? And that came from student and staff voice, and ultimately, what they came up with was this idea of student raffles and being able to win money with teachers' faces on it. And that, when we first started to do it, we started with Ms. Count's face, one of our amazing, uh, substitute teachers, um, and the students wanted to just keep the money. We're like, no, guys, you actually have to hand the money in so we can draw names, but it just so showed how much they really loved it. Uh, and then if you're still looking up there, one of the, the back of the, the, the money has the student's name, the date that they won the money, and then the reason why they won the money. What did they do that was mature, determined, supportive, that allowed them to earn a buck that whole week? And be able to win that prize at the end of the week?
Yeah, we wanted to make a, a universal support for not just the student who is the, the top athlete or the honor roll student, or, you know, some of those students who are getting the job done all the time, and that are really following those expectations all the time. And so, uh, each teacher would get a few of these Merrimack dollars per week, and then depending on what, you know, the student had showed or demonstrated, kind of like a caught you being good, they would earn that, earn that dollar for whatever reason would be, and then they would, at the end of the week, be able to enter their dollars into a raffle. If it shows up, there we go.
Yes. So here's an example during, uh, cafeteria, each team, where they would bring down their money, or their bank, as they called it, and, um, we would draw, teachers would draw students, three per week, and then at the end of the uh, month, we'd have a larger drawing with larger prizes, like a Merrimack, uh, middle school T-shirt, or, um, drawstring bag, or something like that. And as you can see, one of our amazing teachers is drawing, um, one of our winners, and so the students really get into it. Sometimes they over cheer for their classmates, but it really is fun, because I do like to see who, who wins the prize. And this is that reason why we started to incorporate this, because as you can see, October, November, December, those numbers were pretty, pretty high, and those are the numbers per month of, or per day of log entries. And so, uh, come January, we realized, okay, what can we do? And this is when we started to implement the money, the whole school initiative. And of course, February is there. It's sort of an outlier, but right after that February, that long time where they're in school, a little tired, those, those numbers dropped right back down, um, where students, you know, those every, every day, daily, uh, referrals were really starting to decrease, and students were really buying into the idea of the Merrimack Money and, and raffles. So here's an example of our tier two, uh, our check-in, check-out sheet. And again, our four core words, or three core words there, which will lead them to have fun, right? Mature, determine, supportive. Um, and then a student would get this, the student's parents are, are asked whether or not they want to partake in it. The student breaks it down with their teacher or their trusted adult, and goes through each section and what they're expected of. And of course, two is the highest score. You're doing, you know, everything absolutely perfect. You're having an amazing day. One, you're, you're getting by, you're doing what you have to do, but you're not going above and beyond the expectation. And then zero is, we got to improve. We have to continue to, to work in that area, whether it's being mature, determined, and supportive. And then at the end of the day, students typically have, uh, an incentive, which they like, and sometimes it's as small as a sticker, a piece of gum, or, you know, just saying, good job, nice work today, right?
And this also served as, uh, kind of some data collection for some of our tier two students as well to, and, and really help target, if it was, they were having a tricky time in social studies or science, we'd be able to try to help them build some strategies for, uh, improving in that area, so then that way they can learn more in, in those areas, so.
And then, yes, and then, okay, so this is your typical, um, tier one, tier two, tier three behavioral pyramid for, for school and M T S S B, and as you can see, your tier one, is that, that's eighty percent of your student population is one or less referrals. Um, and then tier, tier two, that fifteen percent, that's typically anywhere from three to like five referrals throughout the course of the school year, and then that, that five percent of your student population, that we're looking for additional support and implementation of, um, behavioral techniques. And so here's ours, over the last two years, in two thousand twenty-two to twenty-three, um, there's our numbers. It's sixty-six percent of our student populations in that tier one, uh, twenty-four in tier two, and then our ten percent of our student populations in that tier three. Um, and then if you look to your right, you have this year's data, and yes, we're not done, but when looking at this, we do feel extremely proud of the, you know, the growth that we've made, right? Eighty-two percent now are tier one students, which has been amazing. Um, and then our tier two students doing those Chicos, or those, those plans where they're with a trusted adult, or even a peer, dropping all the way down to thirteen percent, and then back into that five percent of the tier three students, um, you know, that, where we're, we're supposed to be.
Just a little alphabet soup. The O D R stands for Office Discipline Referrals. So last year, there was, you know, twelve hundred and twenty-two, and this year, through May, we have five hundred and fifty-six, so we've decreased. It's a little bit of apples and oranges, because it's a little bit of a, a different group that we sent up to the high school and, and, and came in, but, um, one of the things that I like about the pyramid, and I'm sorry about the thing not working here, is that the, um, the percentages look more of what it was expected. So if it's expected to be eighty percent in the tier one, it means, at least we're taking it as, as a positive sign that some of our tiered interventions are making a difference in that where, where it, it is expected to be for a school of our size, so. It's going out on the screen. Is it going out on your screens too? Ah.
And so, of course, our goals for next year, right, because we're always looking to improve, uh, introducing restorative practices at the universal level, and then advisory for all students, intentional grouping, uh, for increased peer connection, and also during that time will be a great time or a great opportunity for those restorative practices and those groups where, where peers are meeting with teachers or trusted adults in the building, for those restorative conversations and that, that whole school initiative. And then also, you know, working at other skills during advisory and, and grouping students where they would like to be sort of placed as best as we can with peers where they feel open and able to improve as young adolescents and individuals.
All right.
Sounds pretty good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Pat.
Before you get up, let me just go ahead and ask the board if you have any questions.
Yes, sorry.
Okay, before we transition to the next section.
Good call.
All right.
Right. All right, thank you, Patrick. Uh, the next person I'm joined with is, uh, the brains of our operation here. She's the always astounding, uh, Mrs. Hoppa, Ms. Kathy Hoppa, who's our assistant principal. She's done a tremendous job of, uh, implementing some changes in our academic programs and some supports for, uh, inside and outside of the classroom, so I'll turn it over to Kathy.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I'm so excited to share some of our highlights of the year, because I think, um, it's been an amazing year in so many ways, but I only can talk about determined, so I'm going to try to stick to that. Um, oh, that is wacky. Okay, so, um, determined means, you know, um, for us at the middle school level, doing things with intention, right? And whatever that is, making sure that you're doing your best effort, that you're, you're using your supports, you're using your resources, you're using your friends to try to make a best effort. And for middle schoolers, I will certainly get to the academic side of that, but we wanted to acknowledge and kind of
Highlight.
highlight the fact that for middle schoolers, school is so much more than the classroom, and that they thrive in athletics, in music, in arts, and theater. Um, and so we wanted to highlight a little bit of that. Um, right here is our county champion girls soccer team, that one, I'm sure you've heard about this as the year's gone, um, gone on, so they had a tremendous season. Um, oh, you skipped, okay, then, yeah, there you go. Okay, so I wanted Zoe there, is our state champion runner. Um, we've got, uh, our track team that just came in second place this spring. Um, basketball did really well, soccer, we have field hockey. All of our sports are, are lifeline, really, for middle school students, and they've done a tremendous job. Um, here is our, uh, fabulous, um, theater program that I, that, um, of course, is, is legendary, um, in the community. We had two productions over the course of the year, Bugs and The Lightning Thief, that were both tremendous hits. Um, and then I believe, of course, our music program, um, both band and chorus, um, produce some of the best musicians around. Our artwork from our two art classes and art clubs, that's just a sample right there, um, is unbelievable what they're producing. There's our chorus. Um, you know, there's just a tremendous opportunity for students, um, to really excel outside the classroom. We did not include their infamous TikTok and social media accounts, even though they would love us to, um, but that, we decided to leave that off for today. So in the classroom, of course, um, and our lens, you know, looking, um, uh, at the word determined, we're really trying to focus our, um, on the data and using that to inform instruction and to, um, really analyze what the data is showing us and adjust to help students grow. And of course, I know you know that means P L C work, right? And thankfully, we've had a tremendous, uh, collaboration with N H L I, thanks to the central office, and they are helping us refine our professional learning community process, which has always been around. We have wonderful working academic teams, but with everything, particularly, I think, with COVID, systems and processes start to kind of need refinement. And I think, um, I'll have to say particularly with the addition of Mr. Jennings, I have been able to really help our teams, um, focus on that part of, um, the growth model with the eyes on achievement, of course. Um, so over the course of the year, we have, um, thought of ways to systematically look at data to help instruction. And of course, the different teams have done that in a variety of ways. Math, uh, you know, on the seventh grade level might look a little different than eighth, but the work of P L C, um, in a system is to make sure that it's all being done the same way, and those four questions are answered in a systematic and methodic way over and over again. We're looking at what do we want students to learn, what do we do if they, they've learned it, what if we do if they don't, and, and repeat, right? And so, um, the ability to collaborate with N H L I, um, and make sure that that's part of a system is something that we've improved a lot over the course of the year. Um, that goes along with, um, having that goal-directed time, so making sure that the P L Cs are meeting on a regular basis, and there's specific discussion points that they're going through and data that they're looking at. Um, and then, of course, changing their unit instruction to come, um, is something that we focus on a lot. Um, and then also, this sounds kind of silly, but we have a lot of data, um, there's a lot of testing that we do, but how do we make it accessible and really have it at the teacher finger, uh, fingertips? Um, SAS data is wonderful. It can be kind of hard to find. It can be kind of hard to, to weed out and trickle out like what really matters in my math class or my English class, so that's something we're working on as well. Um, this was the first year, um, you might have heard of Hatchet. That was something that's been in the middle school culture for a long time, where it was really a, um, you know, adult supervised study hall, if you will, where students who weren't taking world language would have this time on team with their teachers, and they could kind of finish this and that, you know, maybe get some reteaching. Um, it was certainly beneficial for a lot of students, but we found that this year, um, moving into a targeted instructional model, um, was more beneficial for students using iReady data, iReady data that we got, um, the start of this year. Um, and so making sure that students' placement, um, in a WIN class was directly linked to their performance on the diagnostic iReady data, um, so that if they needed reading support, they were placed in a reading class. If they needed math support, they were placed in a reading class, and that changed every quarter. That was the first time that we'd done that, um, in recent history at least. Um, and I think that mattered when you look at the next slide, when we, um, start talking about growth. Um, and iReady, we saw tremendous growth on the iReady scores from fall to spring. Um, this is our seventh grade data. The reading is on the left, and then math. And you can see the fall data is the light blue, and the spring is the dark, and across the board, we had tremendous growth in all areas of the iReady, um, assessments. So that was really, really good to see, because I think that, that, um, again, the P L C work and that WIN grouping really contributed to some student, some student success. Um, and then the eighth grade is just as fantastic. Um, and of course, there's other variables. I shouldn't say, you know, there was, there's, there's learning in the assessment. They'd never taken it in the fall. They've never seen iReady, and of course, in the spring, there's a lot of other factors that would contribute to why we've seen such growth, but it absolutely is in the right direction, and it's something that we can jump off of next year for even further growth. Um, okay, in terms of goals for the next year, um, we're going to continue to, um, develop our groupings based on um, academic data for WIN blocks. Um, we're also adding, um, in additional to it, like an S E L relationship-based advisory period, on some days of the week, it's going to be an academic-focused advisory, so we can incorporate things like, um, executive functioning and study skills, how to be a middle schooler-type, um, instructional goals for next year. Um, we're also adding, um, like a, a data manager role, um, at it, at each P L C. Um, and that person is going to work in tandem with Bonnie, Amy had mentioned, um, our amazing, um, district data collector. She actually gave us the data of the slides a few ago. Um, so we're going, again, it's about getting that data at their fingertips, so when they're sitting in a P L C meeting, it's right there, and they can start to reflect and adjust their instruction, um, very easily. Um, the last goal before I turn it over, Krigus, that I didn't mention is the SAS data. Um, that's going to be the eyes on, uh, the bullseye next year, is to really dig deep into the SAS data and incorporate that in our P L C cycle. Um, I think that we can, um, it's not exactly showing what the teaching and learning that's happening at the middle school right now, and we, I think with some, some significant and not so significant instructional tweaks, that we'll, we'll be able to boost those skills as well.
Yeah, thank you. And, um, you know, I think that the teamwork of both Kathy and Patrick were able to create a culture and a system and a framework where now we have the ability to have the information, the, have students in a position to learn, and, you know, they're able to really sort of, uh, now that we have that framework available in our school, we're really excited about, um, you know, growing exponentially with some of those other, other skills. And, um, I noticed I'm, I'm now flanked by two incredible teachers here, uh, so I wanted to give them an opportunity to talk about some goals that we have for not only next year, but also in the coming years. And I wanted to start by talking about our math, uh, our math program that had a new curriculum this year, and we also have, uh, some really exciting goals that we're starting to scratch the surface of, particularly in algebra, some of our students, our eighth grade students, rise to the occasion and, uh, take the challenge of algebra in eighth grade, and so we're, we're beginning conversations with, um, central office and with the high school for awarding high school credit potentially in the coming years for students who, if they're completing their, their high school level math, you know, there might be some avenues for them to achieve high school credit. So we're not there yet. That's not going to be a next year piece, but, uh, I would love, um, to turn it over to a Merrimack alumnist, and she's a, uh, she's a math teacher here and works really closely with the algebra team, uh, to work with our students. It's Ms. Leah Johnson over there, so I can turn it over to her. She can talk a little bit about our, our math goals for the coming years.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so our algebra kids work so hard every year. They are a lot of the time our top achieving students, and they work hard regardless of the fact that they get credit or not. But the fact that they are taking the same class as the ninth graders, and we work very hard as eighth grade teachers to plan across teams and to align ourselves with what the high school's teaching. We've gone up there and observed their classes. We've collaborated with the high school teachers to make sure, um, what do you need us to hit before they get to geometry? What do you need us to hit before they get to algebra two? What exactly are the skills that, you know, if we don't quite have enough time to cover, um, that, you know, those are the ones that we could drop, because they're going to see again in algebra two? Um, and just having all of that knowledge and collaboration, they're really taking a ninth grade level course, and they've never gotten credit for it, but why shouldn't they get credit if they're just a year younger, you know? So, um, I was an eighth grader, went through Merrimack, took Algebra One as an eighth grader, never got credit, but that would have been great. Uh, so it will be really cool to see that become a reality, so we're looking forward to working together again as teams, across teams, um, with Ms. Doyle, with the high school teachers, to just streamline everything and make sure that we're meeting any requirements or anything we need to do to give these kids the recognition for all of the efforts that they've been putting forth every year. And I just want to put in another plug for the pre-al students, because they have also been working really hard. This has been the first year that, since about two thousand sixteen, I think, that all students at the middle school have been using the same program to learn from. There's, so there's a lot of consistency going on schoolwide through the Big Ideas Program that we have adopted this year. Um, so there's been a lot more collaboration amongst teachers of sharing resources. It's also the first time that we have all been on a program that is fully editable, so we can take those lower students that need a little more support or differentiation, and we can modify anything to meet any of those students' needs. And we also have the access to pull information or assignments or single problems from as low as the kindergarten textbook of that program. So it's really amazing, and the robust ability to support all of our students. So that has been, I, I can't even speak to how much good that has done. For, before this year, for the last six years, we have only made it through about seventy-five percent of our curriculum every year. Um, COVID was probably a little bit lower than that. Um, but this year, so far, we have made it through about ninety-five percent of the curriculum. And I think that with more streamlining of what we're implementing with scheduling next year for iReady times and, um, just all of the changes that we're continuing to make each year, I think we're going to hit even higher than that next year. So that was really great to see. I'm hoping to see that come out in the SAS data this year, honestly.
And then, um, unless there's any questions for Ms. Johnson?
So my question would be, um, what I would really like to see is the credit for eighth grade algebra, but if a student went to the high school and could test out, if we're a competency-based system, and they could take the Algebra One final exam and pass it, then could we reward credit because they've, you know, met that competency, they have those skills, and they're moving forward? So that just seems like something we could maybe do.
That'll be something really great to look into.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I had a question for you as well. When you say that you've accomplished ninety-five percent of the curriculum, is that the publisher's curriculum, or what as? percent of the curriculum, is that the publisher's curriculum, or what as the middle school and high school have determined, plus the standards, curriculum?
That's a great question.
Because I, let me just say, prefacing with, I'm an Algebra II teacher.
Okay.
And my curriculum, even with my honor students, if we get past chapter fourteen out of nineteen, we, we're lucky.
Yeah. So when we switched over, I mean, the district has gone through a couple of curriculum revisions over the years. And about six or seven years ago, there was this giant binder that was sitting in Ms. Smith's room at the middle school. This is the curriculum of Merrimack math, you know, all, each year, this is what they're going to know and how it relates to the Common Core, how it relates to the programs we're using. And a lot of it said, you know, we'll supplement with, we'll supplement, we'll supplement with extra things, extra things. And so our goal was to find programs that didn't need as much supplementing, that it was more streamlined, and it was all-inclusive of what we needed. So I will say it's, it's pretty close, what, what the book has in it and what we need to cover in a year. We do need to backfill with a little bit of background knowledge and, you know, as you would expect at the beginning of each unit or each year. But there are ten chapters in both pre-algebra and the algebra textbooks, and we have hit, in pre-algebra, lessons from every single chapter. We've hit the full content of eight out of the ten chapters. This past week or two, we just did a little sampling from chapter six and ten that we just hadn't had time to get to. So we're hoping to maybe incorporate a little bit more of those next year, but a lot of the things that we skipped over were things that we know that they're going to see again in Algebra I. So we don't feel too bad about skipping over those.
Well, I, I think that is marvelous to be having the discussions and the competency because most of my Algebra II students are freshmen because we offer it in the eighth grade. But it is discouraging when you look at the state graduation requirements, and you're like, oh, I could have just waited a year to take algebra and then not have to be facing pre-calculus or college algebra dual credit. But I think it would be marvelous for those students who are really, you know, chomping at the bit to get to algebra, to give them that incentive. So.
Yes, Laurie. So, so I just wanted to also say, I, I just love this presentation because to use data to inform instruction, to focus on learning, you know, talking about what do we want students to know and learn, then kids know what you want them. And then what are we gonna do to push those students, and what are we gonna do for the students that need it? I love the climate and culture. I love beginning with the end in mind. You know, I'm, I'm very excited. I'm very excited for next year because this year has been so great. I'm very excited.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, I also brought another tremendous teacher from MMS, says, don't volunteer to time to come and chat with us. This is Senora Steph Sakella, who's one of our Spanish teachers. She's a longtime Spanish teacher, and she's here to talk to us a little bit about some of the changes that we have in our world language department for next year. Some of it will be similar to what Ms. Johnson spoke about with the idea of hoping to try and move towards a credit-bearing Spanish I or French I program, but then also what that would afford us in the seventh grade potentially as well. So if I could kick it over to Senora.
Yeah, all right. Buenas noches. So kind of in an effort to build some interest in continuing world language, both at the middle school and moving on into the high school, we are kind of looking at revising what our program is currently. And just to give you that kind of background, so for as long as I've been at the middle school, both seventh and eighth graders took a world language class, either, they chose either French or Spanish at the end of their sixth grade year, and then they were enrolled in that one language for an entire year in both seventh and eighth. And over the years, that's changed. Sometimes they only had it three days a week, sometimes they had it five days a week. Currently, we're at four days a week right now, but that was kind of the idea. And then the majority of those students would move into the Spanish II or French II program as they continue taking it in the high school. So that's kind of where we were, you know, given the difficult decision that was made to unfortunately have to eliminate world language at J-Muse, we kind of looked at that as an opportunity where I think it's really important for us at the middle school to offer incoming students a chance to explore both Spanish and French before we ask them to commit to that language. So looking at next school year for 2024, 2025, all of the seventh graders are going to take nine weeks of Spanish, kind of in an exploratory curriculum, as well as nine weeks of French at some point during that year. So we're working kind of to create this curriculum for a nine-week program that kind of introduces them to both of those languages and working to make sure that they're pretty similar so that they can kind of have a good understanding of those languages. And then at the end of the seventh grade year, that's when they will choose which language they would want to continue studying in eighth grade. So that's kind of an exciting change. Also, I guess something that I should mention, too, prior to kind of next school year, some of the seventh graders weren't able to take a language. It was often at the same time that WIN or Hatchet was scheduled, and those were when a lot of their services were needed. So they weren't even eligible to take a world language. And now with this new schedule and offering kind of an exploratory, we're going to be able to reach more students at the middle school to give them an opportunity to kind of learn and introduce them to a language. So I think that's really exciting. And then kind of to go along with the ideas for algebra, as we look at those seventh graders and they move into eighth grade for the 2025, 2026 year, we are kind of looking at possibly offering a high school credit for a Spanish I curriculum where they will have it for an entire year in eighth grade. And, you know, really working with the high school, which we already did align a lot with the high school because the majority of our students moved into Spanish II, they just were not receiving a high school credit. So we're gonna kind of continue to work with them and really kind of hone in our curriculum to make it that year-long, potentially having that opportunity to earn a high school credit. Also, in order to, again, continue that interest, we're thinking about potentially offering a non-credit Spanish and French course. So that continues them learning the language with, in mind that they'll probably enroll in Spanish I or French I when they move into high school. So we don't want that gap kind of in the year between seventh and eighth grade if they don't feel that they're ready to pursue kind of a more rigorous curriculum with the high school credit. So those are kind of our ideas for, for the upcoming world language program.
Yeah.
I, I think I know the answer to this, but I want to say it. It sounds like, because my, what initially went through my head when you were talking about, well, we're gonna do the nine weeks and nine weeks in seventh grade is, one, that's great because we want kids to be exposed to that, but two, do they still, at the end of eighth grade, have as much language as they would have under the current program where they like pick one at the beginning and have two years of it? And my intuition is that the answer is yes, if you're gonna be able to get them into French or Spanish II at the high school.
Absolutely. I think it's just going to be, it's just gonna be programmed in a different way. I mean, like I said, if we're, if we are gonna look at giving a high school credit, then we need to, you know, Spanish I is done in one year at the high school. So we can align with that. The, the expectation would be there would be a final, that would be the exact same thing that you would have at, at the Spanish I in the high school. So I think it does. It's just kind of organized in a different fashion now so that we can provide more opportunity for the majority of our students.
I was just about to sum that up with ultimately, this gives more language exposure to all students because of the exposure in seventh for everyone, which was not happening before. And then the potential to continue it in eighth with the less rigorous, non-credit-bearing core, of course. So I'm really excited about that.
Yeah, we are too. And also, we also have, find that there are some students, new students coming into the district, you know, if they have not started at that high school credit, then we're still giving them an opportunity to have language, and that wasn't in our, that wasn't built into our schedule previously. So I think that's another kind of way that we're, I'm trying to get as many students in as possible.
So just going back with, and you already said, this is really huge because, you know, we, we don't want to track students. We want all kids. All kids can learn at high levels. It's just, you know, some kids sprint, some kids marathon. And so to understand that and, and understand the whole middle school philosophy and give those kids that opportunity so it could jumpstart them into a language is so important because if they're going to go to college, and that's their track, and they're in that program that they're getting extra help and they're not getting that language exposure, it almost puts them behind when they get to high school because now they're starting at ground zero in French or Spanish. So this is really exciting for, for Merrimack families.
I agree.
Great, thank you. And I guess we will move on to our next core principle here, and I'll take this one, finally get a chance to talk to it a little bit more. The idea of being supportive was something that the students came up with, mainly towards each other and seeking support from teachers. Took a little bit of different avenue for tonight's presentation and thinking about some of the ways in which we have been, we're tempted to be supportive towards our families and towards our students and our community in kind of a universal sense. We wanted to highlight a couple of things. The first one would be communication. We really tried to make sure that communication was consistent, streamlined, effective. And so some of the things that we've really tried to focus on a lot this year, the first one would be our weekly newsletters to families, little snippet there, very similar to what the elementaries and upper elementaries are doing. So families receive weekly updates with important dates on upcoming events for the school. We also had one for staff as well. Of course, that newsletter looks a little bit different, but some important dates. So then that way, it's readily accessible for staff and for families. Also, a lot of credit to Kathy here to my left for being very active on our social media, being able to post all the good things for the community so that they were able to see and celebrate all the fun things that we've been doing all year long. So that was one way in which we tried to be supportive of the Merrimack community as a whole. The other piece is school safety, which is something that we, we really pride ourselves on quite a bit. So far, just, I've thrown a, a few things up here to talk about, not to, to bore you or to drag things out. But so far this year, we've done fourteen different safety drills at our school. We've collaborated on each one of them with the Merrimack Fire Department, as well as the Merrimack Police Department, to make sure that our procedures were up to the best practices. One of the things we focused on this year was evacuation drills in the cafeteria. Oftentimes, when we schedule fire drills or plan for them, they're often not in the cafeteria, but you can't ever predict an emergency. So we wanted to spend some time with the students to know what happens if you're not in one of your regularly scheduled classes, and it's a whole mass of students in the cafeteria. How do we effectively and safely evacuate there? So we spent some time working on that this year. We were able to add some additional safety equipment to our school, including AEDs for our sports teams and that they could travel with to make sure that if students were at practice or at a game, that there would be safety equipment there. Additional stop the bleed kits that go on our walls throughout the school in case of an emergency, and additional locks and other security for interior and exterior doors. So we felt really positive about that improvement in that direction. We refined some of our staff accountability reports. And so what that means is that during an evacuation or during an emergency drill, not just making sure we knew where every student was, but also where every staff member was as well. And that was something that was always part of our routine, but we really spent some time focusing on, you know, if a teacher is at the other end of the building making photocopies, we wanted to make sure that someone was accounting for that staff member as well. So that was something that took some of our attention as well. Spent some time working with our nurse and some of our teachers to create specialized safety plans for both students and staff that might have limitations in mobility. We have a two-floor school. We have off-site evacuation that is about a quarter mile down the road, and some of our students might not be able to, you know, evacuate in the traditional fashion. So we wanted to really make sure that any student, regardless if we were a staff member for that matter, too, we had an account and a plan and a system for them, given a potential emergency. We also spent some time actually going through some off-site evacuations. Not only, our off-site location is Bishop Field, which is about, like I said, about a quarter mile down the hill from the middle school. So we spent some time going through some drills off-site, not just talking about it and educating, but actually going through it. So teams went down, and you can see where eight-one would line up. These are our academic teams, eight-one through eight-three, and seven-one and seven-three would line up. We also met with police department in the town to talk about what if this happened when this, when there was snow on the ground. So they made a new plowing plan to be able to make room for our students to be able to get there, for the buses to be able to come through and pick up to bring to the high school. And I also want to, I know I've highlighted this before, but also in the lower left, you see a marking that said path. When we were meeting with them, we also realized that the sidewalk that brings everyone down, it doesn't really enter that parking lot without turning the corner in a busy intersection without a sidewalk. So what the town did was they created a path for us. They made an ADA-compliant path that connects from the sidewalk to the parking lot. So again, it just speaks volumes of the commitment from the town for school safety and for security. And I know it seems, you know, small, it's just a little path, but it, it just does speak volumes. So I, I absolutely wanted to highlight that piece as well and what we've hopefully tried to do to support students and staff at our school safety-wise. Earlier this year, we, we were hoping to explore an electronic hall pass. And I know that we've talked at the board here, especially during budget time, and we were granted a free pilot. And so, you know, with the request of the board, we went through with that pilot to see what it was, would look like for us. It's an electronic hall pass monitoring system. It's not an implanted microchip that goes in the kids, and we can monitor that. What it is, is that on their Chromebooks or on the teacher's computer, if someone needed to go into the hallway or needed to go to the main office, the nurse, teacher would be able to, like electronically record that. Think of like a sign-out sheet but a Google Doc. So basically, like, it's a collaborative way that in any given moment, we would be able to know which students are out of the building, or, excuse me, out of their classrooms, in the hallways, and at which designated area. We ran this pilot for two months, March through April vacation for all students and for staff. It wasn't just for one grade, it was for everyone. We were able to gather some evidence from what teachers describe as a little bit of greater accountability for where students were, the time out of class, and so on and so forth. We were also able to gather some information for tiered interventions. What was great was that also we could run some reports where, you know, we could see how many bathroom trips a student took throughout the day, how many times out of class. We were able to calculate that in minutes. And we could do that by gathering all the old, you know, sign-out sheets, but this was able to be a much more efficient type of way to do it. And I think, you know, the anecdote I wanted to share was our critical safety information. So when we, we ran a couple evacuation drills, I was able to look at, you know, my device and be able to see all of the students that were out in the hallway and in the bathrooms, let's say, at a certain time. For our evacuation drills, it was great because students knew where to go and where to reunify, and, and there wasn't any issue there. But we also ran a lockdown drill during this pilot. And when the lockdown drill happened, we looked at our phone and saw that there were four students that had signed out to the bathroom. And we went to those bathrooms, three of those students had, you know, when they heard the lockdown, they were able to get back to where they needed to go. But there was one student that was still in the bathroom. They were doing the right thing by staying in the bathroom. That's what you're supposed to do. And, you know, they were, they were hiding, and they were practicing their drill. But in that moment, a snapshot, I was, knew exactly where that person was, where the other, the rest of that person's class was in their own lockdown. They weren't able to communicate to us. So if, in the event of an emergency, first responders got here, I would be able to tell them that in the seventh-grade boys' bathroom, we had one student, and they would be able to go and get them quickly. So that type of information, being able to have at, at a glance, was incredibly valuable and something that, you know, we would certainly really recommend to continue exploring, as well as I can also see a lot of value at the high school, a place where there's a lot of students in a lot of different areas, especially in the event of an emergency, that is invaluable information, to know where someone is, to be able to offer some support there. We have some, we, we polled the staff with a bunch of different questions. We have that to hand out to you towards the end of the night. We can pass that out to you. And, but, you know, the, the majority of teachers felt that it was a very valuable tool. Yep, Mr. Jennings can pass them out now. Sure, go ahead. And then, you know, the, it was something to, to look at. This is all just raw data that was collected off of our Google form from teachers. So, you know, we wanted to, to run the pilot. We appreciate, you know, the board's support in doing that. And so we wanted to at least offer you some, some information. So there's anecdotal things there that might be potentially beneficial. So, and our goals for, you know, the world of support is, is to continue seeing, are there any other additional forms of communication that may be helpful for families, you know, besides just our social media and our weekly newsletters? Are there, are there more effective things that we could be using in addition to? And also, you know, working with, you know, the experts to continue improving our methods to meet the best practices of safety procedures is certainly something that we're not gonna stop, stop doing yet, so.
I just wanted to encourage you. I am glad that you're always evaluating communication because that is so, so important. And you may have heard us discussing this at the last couple of board meetings, although I know as administrators, watching board meetings is just the highlight of your every other Monday. But that, that is... But that is a goal for us and we're looking at district-wide, the best path forward for communication. So that will be something even administration will be looping you all into for effective communication.
Absolutely. And even at the strategic planning meetings with Mr. Olson and Ms. Doyle, it was, it came up there quite a bit too, and Ms. Halter as well, so.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I wanted to thank you for the data on the e-Hall Pass survey. That's awesome information to have because I know we talked about it a lot during budget season.
Great, thank you.
May I just make a comment?
Yes.
This is a middle school on move. It really is. You did, all of you, just an absolutely outstanding job. You know, when, when I interview every candidate for a teaching position, sometimes I'll ask, what do you think is the strong point of Meramec? And I always say staff, without hesitation. And that was on display tonight. You just did an outstanding job and all. I really feel very confident about the future of the middle school in this school district. And it all starts with, with all of you and your colleagues, just an outstanding job.
Thank you for saying that, Bill.
And I, I want to echo the same thing, but the thing that I'm really happy with tonight's presentation, although we love it, don't get me wrong, we love it to see videos and we love to see the kids involved in so many things, but you have a lot of educators on this board who are very data-driven. And so to have a lot of that data and to see that as a major highlight in your decision-making is very important to us and we're very pleased to see that tonight. So we love seeing all the pictures though, that's wonderful. We love seeing the students. We love recognizing them. We love hearing their updates that you all send to Bill, but I want, I want to thank you for the amount of data you provided tonight.
And how much improvement that data showed. That was kudos. That was incredible.
Thank you. And then I guess our fun data to show you is our, is our smiles and our good times that we've been able to celebrate here because like we talked about, having fun is important too and being able to celebrate all of the hard work. We had lots of spirit days that we participated in. We were able to have chaos and kindness come as part of our kindness month for December to be able to kind of spread the message. So we've had a lot of assemblies involved in there, kind of some more spirit day. And, you know, I guess, I know we've seen the pictures, but the data is the smiles and the excitement that we've, that we have. This was our most recent trips to both Washington DC and historic Boston, a chance to kind of go and explore the eighth grade culminating experiences, which have been really great. We had some, some middle school dances, which of course are highlights for sure. We have a spring dance coming up this Friday and our always popular staff-student basketball game, which is really fun and competitive and a little too competitive sometimes, but it was certainly something that we enjoyed as part of this year. This is our eighth grade group. We're really proud of them and the work that they've done. We're excited to send them up to next year at the, at the high school. I know that they're going to really enjoy working with this group, but some of our goals for next year is also bringing the seventh grade into the eighth grade, into that leadership fold. And this last week, we had our J-Muse sixth graders come up. And so that's kind of our goals for our fun next year is to be able to welcome these next group of students, the next part of our Meramec community and hoping that they have two great years at MMS. So that was, those were our mature, determined, support, fun presentation for this evening, so.
Mr. Bostman, you forgot the video of you dancing that you meant to put in.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. How about a live performance? No. No one needs that. No one needs that.
Well, I, I loved on the Meramec many, I had to look closely. I couldn't tell if you were mewing or thumbs-upping, you know, on that or on your money. Oh, the joys of middle schools, so. Well, thank you so much. We really do appreciate this. Any final comments from the board? All right. Thank you again and enjoy. You're almost there.
We're almost there. Thank you, everyone.
Great job. You guys are really rocking it.
All right. Well, from a wonderful presentation on to an update of an exciting partnership that the district has with the American Legion Post and Bill has offered to step in for Matt.
Yes, this is, as you know, a very exciting partnership and one of the most worthwhile that I think I've ever experienced in school administration. Matt has done a tremendous amount of work with Tom Trusso, our Director of Maintenance, with the staff from the American Legion. They have been wonderful. And their interest is in, they have a field already in place. Now, it does need some initial maintenance, some work in the outfield, a little bit of less work in the infield, but it does need some work, which we have committed to. Have a scoreboard in place, as you can see in the packet, and they are building a beautiful pavilion, which will make it very comfortable for fans to visit and watch the games. They have, you know, barbecue facilities there. There are all sorts of possibilities and they, the American Legion staff has been absolutely terrific and extraordinarily supportive. As you know, the existing field is downhill, really not handicapped accessible, and this will provide just a wonderful, wonderful playing experience for our athletes. And hope you'll support this memorandum of understanding. It is very advantageous to us. If we were to go about building facility like this, it would cost a significant amount of, of money. It'll be a little bit of money to get the outfield in shape, infield in shape, couple of other small improvements, but we are very excited about this and I hope you'll approve it.
So I will entertain a motion to accept this MOU?
I make a motion to accept the MOU between the American Legion Post 98 and the Meramec School District in regards to the softball field.
Second.
Discussion? If all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Three zero zero. Thank you. Okay. Update from the Planning and Building Committee meeting.
Lori, do you want to say anything? I'll.
So we're very grateful that Matt and Bill attended the last Planning and Building Committee meeting. Some of the, and Lori, and Lori met with the members of the Planning and Building Committee and gave them a vision of the school board, but also asked them, because of the importance of communication and the importance of getting the information on going forward with what the SAU building would look like next year, that they televise all their meetings because so much work has been done in that committee, but the committee's not televised. So only those committee members and what they put out is the information or what information we bring back here. So that was agreed to. Lori also gave them their charge on, you know, communicating, developing, working with the school board. Also, we are going to also talk about an ad hoc committee again to get more people involved because the Plan and Building Committee is a very small committee and we need, you know, a lot of different people to help support us. She asked all the members to sign an ethics agreement. Every member of the school board, every year, we go through an ethics agreement that we sign that we, what our, what our charge is. And we are asking this year, the board agreed last week, two weeks ago, to ask the Budget Committee members and the Planning and Building. The Planning and Building, the Chair of the Committee just asked all the committee members, are you ethical? And so they didn't sign. So I'm not sure what we're going to do with that, but that's where we're at with signing the, the actual agreement. Lori was going to forward and ask them to create something because it's their committee too, like what they feel should be the vision of their committee and what their responsibilities are. So that's where we're at. We did talk a little bit about, you know, the Rite Aid building again, and Matt and Bill did go and tour the Rite Aid building. One of the suggestions is the Planning and Building Committee, look at any retail space that we have. You know, the town talked about, you know, the police department, if they build something in the center. We didn't really want to put Matt Chauvinal in jail. And then as far as the writing building, there are still freezers there and the location might not be good, but to start and do that work again, go out and tour and see what's available.
I also say that have kind of a homework assignment in that for the end of June, I will be providing them with a list of the staff that is in the central office, or we desire to have in the central office, their tasks and the workflow. Because there, you know, there is some question of, do we need the people that we strongly feel we need in the central office or can some of them be decentralized? Which is very, very inefficient from our perspective. So we're going to provide that information to them so that they understand the importance of what happens when we onboard a person? Who do they interact with when they come in to the office? What happens when we need to interact with the Director of Special Education, HR, payroll, accounts payable, accounts receivable? So we'll provide that to the building committee so they have a clear understanding of why we need to be under one roof and what is the significance of a conference room, which in, in my opinion, from my experience, one of the most valuable and necessary spaces in a central office. We have no space right now that is adequate. The only place we have to meet right now is either in a classroom at J-Muse or a small office conference room at the high school. And we can just barely fit into that location. So we'll talk about the need for it, the types of training from my experience that have, and activities that have gone on in a, in a conference room, not only from the school department perspective, but from other town departments also, because we certainly would want to make that available to other town departments. And I will be glad to talk with them and present to them what types of experiences we had, we had with public safety personnel in terms of using our facilities in another community in which I worked. So we'll give as much detail as possible.
And I just want to say one more thing, like, so last year, we did do open house at the SAU building to give people a tour. I think it's a critical piece of information to have people tour the central office because one of the discussions was, well, if you're so concerned about the HR director's safety, why wouldn't you move them to a different school? And there's, there are so many complications in a school district, but first of all, the HR director's hiring, in some situations, they're working with people who are retiring to give them benefits, but there's also some very difficult discussions that the HR director has with people. And when you go, it's, it's not even a basement bedroom. It's a, it's a tiny little space and there's only one way in and one way out. And, and so you would have to see it to understand and understand being in schools and what that role is, the importance. And, and so when we say things like, you know, we are concerned about safety, it's real, it's real. It's, as a former principal of a high school, that space is so inadequate and, and I do have concerns all the time.
That was louder than I expected. I'm really glad that they've agreed to have the meetings televised because I think a lot of what happened last year, leading up to the vote, was that people had a lot of questions about work that had already been done, but we didn't have a lot of, like being able to point someone to the video where they talked about that and where that work is happening will be huge in terms of educating the public on why this is a need. And I'm really happy that your workflow presentation will be there too, because also that, just that knowledge piece of, I don't think people realize how much of a business the school district is. You, you talk about it and we talk about educating the children, which is obviously our main priority, but, you know, we have HR staff and we have, and it's a sizable company, a sizable corporation, and you need all of those job functions and to, to know why it's more efficient and better use of taxpayer money to have all of those people under one roof will be really huge. So that'll be good.
And I want to add to what both of you said. When it comes to our HR director, she is an executive leadership position. She is a member of this team, just like the three who sit here. She doesn't come to our meetings unless we ask her to, but she is a core member of this team. And so to just move her offsite doesn't even make sense because most of her work is integral day-to-day-to-day with these three. And so her role, and, and I'll admit, I have a bias. I am in the middle of an HR and education course and learning about what that responsibility and role is makes even more sense why we need to be concerned about her safety and keep her as part of your executive leadership, leadership team. I do want to say that I want to thank Meramec TV who really stepped in and said they would be happy to televise those meetings. Also, I spoke with the Chair, Shane Albuquerque, about as they move forward for the Planning and Building Committee to work with Meramec TV on technology requirements for that conference room space. Because if the voters approved such a thing for town use, school use, there are technology needs that would be necessary. And so Meramec TV is excited to talk to Planning and Building about those requirements as well. Lastly, it was great to be at their meeting and I'm excited working with Shane Albuquerque and also Acting Chair Mackenzie Murphy on the Budget Committee and just the collaboration we've already begun early on in, in this new year. What, and I say new year based on election because our election year runs April to April. Any other comments on the Planning Building? Is there any other new business? Okay, we are going to move our approval of the minutes to our next meeting because there was an emergency that prevented those from being finished. And so we will look at those in two weeks and we will go to our consent agenda. In your packet tonight are both nominations for teachers and administrators as well as some resignations. So we'll start with nominations. Hope Bebo, elementary teacher at James Master Cola Elementary. Emily Robinson becomes the district's first K-8 school social worker. Michelle Castelli, elementary classroom teacher at James Master Cola Upper Elementary. Christopher Andrews, physical education teacher at Thornton's Ferry. Krista Blondin, special education teacher, Meramec Middle School. Sadie Gary, special education teacher, Thornton's Ferry. Caitlin Justin, Justiceon, special education teacher, Thornton's Ferry. Elizabeth Lambert, special education teacher, Thornton's Ferry. And Gillian Suesi, special education teacher, Thornton's Ferry. And as you look through the nominations, some things that jumped out at me is that several of our nominees tonight are Meramec High School graduates. And we've also had several, both a Title I tutor and a paraprofessional move up through the ranks. So I just wanted to point that out, that we are a close community, we like to grow our next leaders and I'm, I'm so happy to be bringing those forward tonight. We have two administrators to nominate, Sarah Perotto, Director of School Counseling, K-8, and Amy Gentile, the new Assistant Principal at Reed's Ferry. And then finally, some resignations. Amy Larkin Perez, the Physical Education Teacher Department Head at Meramec High School. Malagros Santiago, World Language Teacher at Meramec High School, and April Dos, Special Education Teacher at Thornton's Ferry. So entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Naomi Halter, seconded by Lori Rathhouse. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Passes three zero zero. And I just want to say that we had the opportunity to meet with Amy and her role as Assistant Principal at Reed's Ferry, and we were just very pleased with her as the board. All right, committee reports. I'll start with Naomi and then go to Lori.
I attended the final Strategic Planning Committee meeting on Tuesday, May 28th. The strategic plan itself was like, I would say probably 99% done by the close of that meeting, what we decided as a committee. We've been doing a lot of work in some shared documents and the, the plan is there and there's someone set up a way for us to go fill out a form and comment on the various areas that were, were not quite across the finish line yet. And so that feedback is due tomorrow. So it was a really wonderful act of committee to be a part of and the plan is super exciting. And we're gonna, I know Bill was going to get it across the finish line and make it look pretty and then we'll hear about it soon.
Well, we met with a graphic artist last week and that individual is, is going to give us some ideas in terms of interspersing pictures, a little bit of color and... to give us some ideas in terms of interspersing pictures, a little bit of color and design to the documents, so this is just not all print, because people are just going to put something like that down. On the other hand, we don't want something too busy, because I've seen some strategic plans that have so much overdesigned to them, you don't know where to look, and your eyes are all over the place. So we want to have a little bit of, to use an old term, a little bit of snaziness to it, along with the great functionality. So I'll keep you informed, hoping to have it done for the end of this month. But I think we may do the presentation, formal presentation to you in August, when everyone is back, ready to go to school, and there's a little bit more focus on it than at this point in the year.
We'll do a soft launch and a hard launch of the strategic plan.
Lori? So we already talked about planning and building, so Parks and Rec, you're still the chair right now, because they forgot to put us on the agenda, so it's going to switch at this Thursday's meeting. But I let them know we're going to be sharing the responsibility. So, so just so you know, the last meeting was canceled, but when I went to do the pledge, they can't do it till we're approved, so that's happening on Thursday.
All right, correspondence. I've had a number of emails that I just, they were not in the board's lane, I've just passed them along and communicated with administration. You've seen most of those emails. All right, board comments?
I have a couple. So, so I was able to attend the dedication on Saturday morning of school boards, school house three and 12. Again, I just want to reiterate what Bill said, John Lasoca and Charles Morald worked really hard to make these schoolhouses a landmark, CSAA. Congratulations to all the committee members. I found it very interesting how many historical society members are former teachers or married to teachers, and just a shout out to Ms. Tmasian, who was my seventh grade teacher, who is, you know, a committee member, was just so nice to see her. I also liked, Bill did a wonderful job representing the school district, and one of the things he encouraged the historical society is to look for our students to do extended learning opportunities. The historical society is trying to become technology-based, and that is going to be tons and tons and tons of information that have to go in, and so we're going to need a lot of volunteers, so that's, that's really positive. As far as the MOU with the American Legion, I am very excited on that. I talk all the time about Title IX and the importance of women's athletics being the same as men's athletics, and to have a field that is here, that is accessible, is so important. And then finally, I just want to say to Chase, like, I, I, we are going to miss you so much, and these are just the last few pages, and I know you're wild enthusiasm, what you're going to do in the future is going to be phenomenal, but to have this opportunity with you has been really a gift, and we're very grateful for you.
Thank you so much. I mean, it's been an amazing opportunity for me too, I'm so glad to be able to represent the community and the school.
All right, well, I will open the floor once again for public comment on agenda items. If you'd like to comment, please come to the mic, state your name and address. If you're a student, you don't need to say your address. Most everybody left, but there's two people still here, so I want to open it up. Going once, going twice. Sold to a motion to adjourn. Moved by Naomi, seconded by Lori. All those in favor say aye. Pass three zero zero. Enjoy June, thank you and good night.